All right, you ready? Everybody ready?
Ready, ready.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order with a short prayer and a salute to our flag. Almighty God, grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of all our residents. May the heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice and service to our nation, and may He watch over and protect our servicemen and women now guarding the gates of freedom. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Terry's statement of publication.
Yes, Mayor. Take notice that this council meeting of the Mayor and Borough Council being held on the 13th day of April 2015 has been advertised and posted in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Here.
Kilpatrick.
Here.
McGill.
Here.
Melendez.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Rittenhouse.
Here.
Council President, approval of the prior minutes.
I move the following minutes of the mayor and the council be approved on roll call vote, subject to correction if necessary.
Read the list, please, Councilman.
You got to read them? Are they listed or as?
As listed, they said.
As listed.
Thank you.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Captain, if you would, make your presentation.
Actually, it's Mr. Bracken. He took the cuffs off, huh?
Tom, if you'd identify yourself for the recording, please.
Oh. No, you just have to talk really loud.
Okay. All right, thank you. My name is Tom Bracken. I am the IT Director, sometimes called the Chief Information Officer, sometimes called the Chief Technologist Officer of Sarerville. I started here in December of last year and found quite a bit of challenge here so far. There's a lot to do, and one of the highest priority things that we're going to look at right now is the security cameras, and that's what brought us here today, Glenn and I. So what we're looking at is the security cameras at the public safety complex. That includes the police department and the municipal hall, or the courthouse. Hold on a second. So what we have today is an analog system. It covers the building and portions of the parking lot, and it has a recording system, which is kind of out of maintenance and really doesn't have any sufficient retention to do the job that they really need done. Additionally, problematic is that the viewing equipment is not in the correct places. There's some usability issues in terms of the way that dispatch and the station commanders are able to use these viewing stations. The police station has changed over time. So where dispatcher is maybe looked at one screen in the past, they have about four screens to monitor, plus they have to monitor what's going on in these camera systems. And it's really not a usable or friendly system for them to be effective in their jobs. Now additionally, I mean, the main driver here is just the maintenance of the system. There's components that have been failing. One can speak to some of that. The monitors aren't very crisp or clear for them to kind of identify what's going on about the building. And the huge driver is the retention of video. So it's hard to really like go back and see what's happened when there's actually an event, they need to do a little forensic analysis to figure out what's going on. So we've looked at a couple courses of action. One way to go about this is to just take the existing system, patch it up, right? It's an analog system, you know, where there's gaps in coverage, add additional cameras, add a recording devices onto the system, and just sort of, it's sort of a Band-Aid solution. We looked at that, but what we saw is that you're still, at the end of it, what you have is a system that's fixed up from about 20 years ago, and a lot's changed since then. And so it's really not the appropriate solution for the safety complex. And so the alternate solution that we looked at was an IP camera solution. What this does is it provides a superior image. For example, the worst of the IP cameras that would be adequate or placed in service is four times the resolution of the analog cameras that are in place. It has centralized retention storage for the video, so I can go back and look at all of the cameras in one central spot and extract as needed. And it has an improved ability to monitor based on events and time. So if I say, you know, no one should be entering this door or this evidence locker at this time of day, it becomes an event. And so the personnel in dispatch, instead of having to look at four screens plus two screens above them, it can create alert so that, you know, they know that an event's happening in real time. So it's more than a system, it's more than just adding hard drives and saying, here's a system that they can go back and look at. It's a system which gives them a real-time ability to monitor what's happening about that, you know, about the police department and the courts. Additionally, it's based on IP technology, which is what we're using for the phone system and what we're using for our desktops. And so it would be basically an architecture that we're very familiar with, and is very supportable from an IT perspective. It's also not like a standalone or atomic system. What that does is sort of makes it an open system, right? So it's not closed architecture. I can extend it wherever the IP networks go. For example, on the initial proposal, we're looking at extending it wirelessly into the parking lot, because that's a coverage problem right now. We can't look at the back of the parking lot of the police station. We're not covering enough of the front of the parking lot. We're not covering near the street. By unlocking, by abandoning sort of an analog solution and going with an IP solution, we can provide coverage out there and coverage and reconfigure as needed, you know, when they do work on the parking lot, if they change it, you still have a usable system. So if the building changes, we can change the system to match, and that's important to us. Also, I'd like to kind of point out that, you know, another ramification of that is as we extend the IP network, and this comes with wireless component, you know, if I can reach the, something like, let's say, the security, I mean, the senior center, that's reachable via IP. So if we build a new camera system at the senior center and expand, that's an option. It's going to be built right, we can integrate it right into this system, you know, because I know there's talk about, you know, putting cameras as a senior center. And the concern is, it's not that, you don't want to just put cameras in, we want to make it usable and effective. And I think by having the cameras not only be monitored at the senior center, but being able to monitor it at the police department, you know, so that if there's an event, we have that coming up in dispatch or station commander, and they're reacting to it, you know, if there's an event at night or some other time.
If I could just speak a second.
Sure.
Just to give you a little bit of perspective, and I apologize for the booming voice.
You don't need the mic.
No, I don't. I really don't. I inherited my father's mouth. Essentially, what we tried to do here was to ensure that we could replace a 35-year-old camera system within the public safety complex. That was our first priority. As you know, in this litigious day and age, if somebody can make the accusation we were having beer parties on ponies in the building, we need to be able to refute that. So we'll be able to now have a digital archive of all activities in and around the public safety complex, refute any such allegations, no matter how nefarious they are. Secondly, from a risk management perspective, if we get a slip and fall in the front, somebody's coming in for court, oh, I slipped and sprained my ankle on February 27. Well, no, see, you didn't do that. Jiff will be happy, and ultimately, we'll be much happier for you. In building the system out, our goal is to eventually, as Tom said, and he can handle all the specs, but we want to modularly introduce the system to other aspects of the borough. And with the technology that's available now, that wasn't available even five years ago, we could do that in an extremely cost-effective manner. I'll remind at least several of you that we're here back in the Neanderthal ages when we had one camera in Kennedy Park that was hooked to a phone line, because we had a vandalism problem. And we were getting $2,500 a month.
Phone bills.
Phone bills to watch a door open and close, because somebody put it by the bathroom door. We're trying to be much more forward-thinking in terms of camera placement. The technology will allow us to grow. It'll allow us to grow in a very cost-effective fashion. So where only three or four years ago, we would be paying for individual cellular air parts or cameras, now we're going to be able to integrate that into our private network, which will maintain at no ongoing expense. So if I need a camera to cover the back lot of the Borough Hall, and the end result is it's a $1,000 expenditure to hook it to this existing system, that's it, we're done. Other than poor Ruben maybe getting on a ladder with Windex once in a while and cleaning the lens, we buy it, we own it, and it's integrated into our system. So we're very excited about it for a couple of reasons. Cameras and technology don't replace bodies on the street. Obviously, we're always going to need the police to respond. However, this is going to allow our officers to cover a lot more area, a lot more efficiently, eliminate nuisance complaints. I mean, if I get a report of camels walking through the Borough Hall park, my dispatcher could pretty much flick a switch and go, well, there's no camels. We really don't need to send a guy there. However, with the technology available, if we have a report of vandalism at the Leprechaun Field, we're going to be able to zero in, capture a good digital image, identify the person, and hold them to task for whatever that they did. And ultimately, that's our goal, is we build a system out modular.
Oh, you're so animated.
Okay, so Glenn actually covered the needs really well. But what brought us here is the next steps on how we can accomplish this. So the acquisition strategy is what I'm talking about. We looked at state contracts to meet the needs for security cameras and found that there's a gap for the IP camera systems. I mean, actually, I could acquire an IP camera for the inside of a van, but I can't get a camera system for the police department through current state contracts. So the avenue we would like to pursue is through using a cooperative purchase agreement, the WISC and NASPO. We're familiar with WISC since it's, for there's areas where New Jersey participates. For example, I can buy Dell desktops through that method. But New Jersey is not a participant in the security protection device area of the contract, but as a local entity, we're allowed to participate. And the advantages would be that it makes sense in that we don't have to attempt an RFP for this when it's already been done for the same systems that we're going to purchase, and it'll make it a quicker and less risk moving forward. So in order to do this, we were looking for, there's, of course, there's a lot of paperwork that has to be done, competitive pricing through the WISC to make sure that we're getting the best value for the solution, and then we want, we need agreement from the council to pursue this method of acquisition for these camera systems.
Do we have any ballpark figure on this?
Yes, right now, we're looking at about $130,000. Now, keep in mind, that's not, that includes the core, and that's what Glenn was talking about, is what we're building is the core of the system and cameras for the public safety complex, right? From this, we can expand, and so that investment will pay off, you know, over time as we incrementally increase where we're covering.
Mayor, I have a few, two quick questions.
All right.
Glenn, do you know if there's any grants out there for this type of security?
The good news is yes. The bad news is we're not eligible. And the short story is, once we have forward movement in the point, and we have physical structures of a non-county entity down there, we will become eligible for port security funding under the federal government. But until that happens, we are not eligible. We are looking to that moving forward, because as you can imagine, our needs will grow exponentially in that area. But right now, until we see some progress in terms of construction, the short answer is no.
I would like you to stop at the first part with yes. But in any rate.
Us too.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think there was a couple of open items you needed from our attorney to push this forward.
I, we've already worked on that with Tom. As a matter of fact, after Tom gets done with his presentation here in a couple seconds, I was going to walk back, because an email's already been sent to Tom. I think we're good to go.
Yeah, I received the email to go that we're good.
I get it.
Sorry.
Tom, just a quick question. Have you reached out to like the Board of Education and Security in reference to possibly expanding out to include them?
I think Glenn knows he has to tell you.
We currently have an agreement in some respect with the Board of Education for an emergency-as-needed basis. We have reached out to the Board of Ed. I know they have a separate IT project going on, and we will be working with them moving forward. Regardless of where that goes, we will have the ability to accept a digital feed from any entity that wants to provide it to us and when.
Okay.
But there are some peculiarities with the Board of Ed. There's privacy issues, and certainly, that's a separate governing body that we'll have to.
Of course.
Deal with, but it's our, it's our hope that our ongoing cooperative efforts with them will bear fruit.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
May I ask, if you don't mind? Mr. Bracken, is there a timeline on the senior center? Is there any, could you give me a ballpark on when we might have visual at the senior center, number one? And number two, where do we stand with the new generation of radios?
Okay, for the senior center, we're looking for the police station to be the core, so it'll be dependent on that project timeline. I would say this year, though.
Oh, very good.
Right, we would like to, I spoke to people at the senior center, and he's looking at me. But that's, that's what we expect. Once the core is in, adding additional sites isn't very difficult.
Right, the first step is getting through the initial installation. Once you have that base, then it's a matter of just adding cameras over the existing IP networks.
Okay, and the second question was about the new radio system. Well, the VCOM consultant was approved. Captain Batko and I have gone and had a discussion with them about two weeks ago, and they're going to come to Sarerville on Wednesday and do site surveys at the transmission and receive sites, just to understand the coverage issues, and also, they're already looking at frequency issues.
I'd like to see that, if possible, fast-track in some way because of the dead zones.
Understood, understood.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Dan?
So just to review, to wrap it all up in a nice little bow, you're going to, in the agenda meeting, we're going to ask that the council make a resolution to approve to work with WISC, correct?
Correct.
Authorize the contract for WISC, and that will make this all in a tight bow, correct?
That's correct.
And there won't be anything else?
Next step, yeah.
And there won't be anything else that we would need beyond that? Is that correct?
That is not correct.
Okay, what else would we need? I just want to make sure that everyone understands what we would need.
Okay, follow, okay, following agreement of going through WISC, we have to approve of the proposal and ensure that we're getting the best value for that proposal.
Right.
Right, so that's a really important step.
Okay, but that'll take.
That's, wouldn't be ours, it would be yours, right?
Excuse me?
That would be your step, correct?
Approving it, yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, we just wanted to know what we have to do here as a governing body.
For the council, for what the council is doing, right.
What do you need us to do?
Okay.
Maybe I'm missing something, but I thought the agenda was the discussion part and the council was the action part, but we seem to be discussing at the council, taking action during the agenda. It's a small item, but at $130,000, and I understand WISC, I think I understand it, but what would, what would the harm be to simultaneously send out for an RFP and use WISC as an ultimate backup system? The whole thing, which is to drive for the greatest value to the taxpayer.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor. I can point out to you that we actually engaged in an RFP process periodically over the last three years. Councilman Melendez was a much younger fellow when we started that, and he helped to shepherd us through that. And we ran into issues, as Tom explained, there are no turnkey vendors for that kind of an apparatus, and it wound up being exponentially more expensive following that pursuit, or so it would seem. We did have a, as a matter of fact, with council approval, we did bring in a panel of experts, some consultants, and an RFP was generated, but when it got to our purchasing agent, she said there was simply no way we could make that fly. It was utterly too complicated and too multiphasical to go out and do it efficiently and cost-effectively.
And that's the problem with RFPs of this nature. When it's, when you're dealing with sort of commodity-type items, it's a lot easier versus an integrated system of this nature. WISC Cooperative has already done the work and already competitively bid that. The idea is to take advantage of that.
Are there any other questions?
Just so I understand this, we're not talking about taking any action at the agenda meeting, just authorizing Terry to have the resolution on our next business meeting? Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Well, that's good that we understand that. Are there any other questions for the captain and for our information officer? Any other questions? We thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Bracken, Captain, thank you very much.
Okay, with that, Terry, you have a proclamation?
Oh, just leave it over there, thank you.
Tom, don't turn it off.
Okay.
Bar of Sarerville proclamation.
By the way, Tom, put it on your to-do list about a PA system here.
Number 14.
Okay, okay. Terry, go ahead.
Guess the clerk will have to wait for the new PA system.
Yeah, go ahead.
Number 14. Bar of Sarerville proclamation, whereas distracted driving is a serious life-threatening practice that is preventable, and whereas distracted driving can result in injuries and deaths to all road users when drivers divert their attention away from the task of driving to focus on another activity instead, and whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration eliminates that at any given moment during daylight hours, 660,000 drivers are using handheld cell phones while driving, and whereas NHHTSA further estimates that thousands of people are killed each year in distracted driving crashes and nearly half a million people are injured, and whereas the state of New Jersey will participate in the Nationwide Distracted Driving 2015 Crackdown from April 1 to 21, 2015, in an effort to raise awareness and decrease driver distraction through a combined, a combination of enforcement and education and reduction in distracted driving in New Jersey, which will save lives on our roadways, and whereas the national slogan for the campaign is, "You Drive, You Text, You Pay." Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kennedy O'Brien, Mayor of the Borough of Sarerville, proclaim that the Borough of Sarerville declares its support for the Distracted Driving 2015 Crackdown, both locally and nationally, from April 1 to 21, 2015, and pledges to increase awareness of the dangers of distracted driving and witnesses whereof I have caused this proclamation to be issued, an official seal of the borough duly fix this 13th day of April 2015, and the same duly attested by the municipal clerk.
Is there a motion?
I move that the mayor's proclamation be approved on roll call vote.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
I have no warden's, as mayor.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to open to the public any questions or comments on consent agenda items. Are there any questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the public hearing be closed, and the consent agenda resolutions be approved on roll call vote.
Second.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes. Can we have discussion, please?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Arthur.
On 2015-97, this is the appointment of memorializing the action taken. This is for the new ABC attorney. We still did not receive, we know how much we're going to be paying him, $185 an hour. We still did not receive any of their background or experience, and I was just wondering, Mr. McGill, if you have that information? And also, I understand that the police chief and his staff were not even contacted about this prior to it being passed.
I actually have some of the information for you, Art.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, the council was on the ABC board in East Orange, and she currently handles ABC matters for Monroe and Lake Como, and she's handled contested hearings and routine renewals and transfers for many private clients as well. So she does have a background in ABC. She just did not put, they did not put it on the resume, just like Mr. Novak did not put it on his resume last year. But it's in there. If you want a copy of it, I can get it over to you.
I would.
Okay.
And also, I guess they don't like to know where they're located, because when we get things in our package, it has no header on it. So we have no idea where they're located, but we are going to be paying transportation from Bedminster down to Sarerville whenever they're doing work, as well as emails we're going to be paying for also, because they do electronic correspondence. I'll be voting no on that section.
Are there any other comments? Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes, with the exception of 2015-97, I'll be voting no.
Okay, do we have anything for executive session? Okay, being nothing for executive session, I'll open up the public portion for questions or comments on any and all issues. Are there any questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that being said, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll go to the agenda section of the meeting.
Let me put the agendas out, Mayor.
But I need one, Mike, to open the meeting.
It's in your packet, Mayor. Do you want a fresh one?
I'll take a fresh one. Do we have a fresh one?
Yes.
Let's have a fresh one.
You can go.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, I'm going to call the agenda portion of the meeting to order with everyone standing for salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Terry's statement of publication.
Mayor, this agenda meeting being held on the 13th day of April 2015 has been advertised and posted in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Here.
Kilpatrick.
Here.
McGill.
Here.
Melendez.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Rittenhouse.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, under new business, we're going to have a discussion on a proposed ordinance to hire an animal control, who's an animal cruelty investigator. Who's leading this? Who's the point person on this? Who's claiming credit?
I guess I'll lead it. Our animal control officer realized that we did not have any ordinance in reference to the animal control in the cruelty section. When we have an investigator, we, they have other things that they can use and other powers they have as being named as an animal cruelty investigator. It is still under our animal control officer. It's separated. We had a discussion about it. It gives them a little bit more power under any of the residents who are working with, I mean, that are involved with any animal cruelty, and we need to have something adjusted in our ordinance. Yes, you know, and also, I just want to point out that it gives them the opportunity to file charges. Correct. Against any of the cruelty.
Do they have police powers to arrest?
I don't believe they have police powers to arrest.
No more than any other citizen.
That's it, there.
What'd you say, Mayor?
I said, no more than any other citizen, you know.
Okay. Any other, any other discussion on this?
Just a question, is this going to add another person to the, what we're paying for?
No, it's included in the amount that we're paying right now.
This is coming, this person's coming out of Monmouth County?
Correct.
Okay, next item.
Excuse me, do I have authorization to list it for introduction at the next meeting?
What is the pleasure of the governing body?
I make a motion that we authorize Terry to put this on for the business meeting, the first reading, next, the next business meeting.
Any objection to that? Okay. Okay. Committee reports, administration of finance, Councilwoman Novak.
Yes, I move that the following minutes be received and filed Board of Education Minutes March 17.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, received bingo and raffle applications. Wilson School PTO for May 15 to conduct a bingo. Traveling Knights of Olbridge to conduct an on-premises 50-50 at the VFW, oh no, excuse me.
April 17.
April 17 at the VFW. St. Stanislaus Altrum Rosary Society to conduct a 50-50 on May 16 on the school in charge property.
Any objections? Next item.
Okay, we've received the following as listed, tax appeals.
Forward them to the tax council.
Any objection? Next item.
Okay, received special ruling from the Director Division of Alcohol Beverage Control to permit the issuance of new license upon failure to timely renew pursuant to New Jersey statute 31:1-12.18 for the 2014-2015 license term, and to permit the renewal of this pocket license pursuant to statute 33:1-12.39 for the 2013-2014-2015, and then for the 2015-2016.
Any objection? Then the clerk will prepare a resolution, same, same license with E as listed.
Yes, mayor.
Is it the same license for F and G?
It is not.
They're all the same license, right?
No. D and E is Marullo 2 and Marullo 3. F is memorializing action that was taken back at a hearing we had on September the 24th, which was denying the renewal of Gianna's license for the 2012-13 license. Mayor, I need a resolution memorializing that action from, what was held back at that hearing, and another resolution upholding the denial for the following year, 2013-14.
Is there any objection to that resolution? Next item, Terry.
We're to G, right?
Yes.
Okay. Notice received for the, you want to read that?
Yes, yes. We also received a notice from the appellate court, which had reversed the criminal conviction that was taken upon the holder of that liquor license, Gianna's Incorporated. So at this point, the council does not really have any recourse other than to renew once we receive the tax clearance certificate for the 2014-15 licensing term. But let it just be noted that that resolution will read all the conditions that was contained in that stipulation of settlement agreement from back in 2009, and also all of the conditions that were withheld, that were held on that license, and which will remain part of that license until the council so removes.
Yes, mayor, you know, I've worked with Terry on this. It's taken a number of meetings to work through this, and I just want to point out, Terry's did a wonderful job recreating the history on this, because Gianna's has been a long tortured history.
Okay, is there any, 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 any issues with this? All right, next item, mayor.
Okay, New Jersey General Assembly is requesting a resolution in support of bill A 4235, known as the Transparent Tax Act of 2015.
Any objections? Next item.
Mayor, do you want a resolution on supporting that? Or do you want to review it and then take further action? I don't know if the council.
Let's review it, review it first.
Review it, please.
Okay, so the council will review it, and at the next meeting I'll list it again, and you can give me your course of action, mayor?
Fine.
Thank you.
Letter from the chairman on commission on aging recommending the appointment of Krishna V.
Beech.
Okay.
John, if you would, if you'd come up here, please.
You want to just?
To make a, make a presentation from the commission on aging.
John LaPatriello, 25 Third Street in St. Louis. Yes, Krishna applied about two, two and a half years ago. I question a little bit of what happened in February, when the council jumped from her, now I'm questioning you guys, when the council jumped from her to Ken, and I wasn't notified. Should I have been? I don't know. It never happened in the past. I've been the head of the commission for three years, on it for 13 years, and of course I got educated along the line. I stopped, asked Terry about it, and she said there's nothing I could do about it. It wasn't looking to do anything about it, it's just where my authority goes and whatnot.
Well, traditionally, we allow the, the commission of aging would always make a recommendation of whom they wished the governing body to appoint. Apparently this year, it fell on deaf ears.
Well, that was my assumption, that should have went from me to you, and then whatever you wanted to do about it. So.
What is, what is the recommendation of the commission of aging?
Well, my am-
To replace Martha.
To replace Martha, John.
Who, are you, are you recommending Krishna replace Martha?
Only because she put it in for a couple of years. Her survey and her answers to our questions, what, that she wanted to serve the seniors in the best way she can. Most people want to do that anyway, because anybody wants to help us out is crazy anyway. But at the same time, she did say she wants to help us out.
Okay.
And that's her interest.
I think I'm in my 30 days since Martha sent in her letter, so I'll make a motion to appoint Krishna V. to fill Martha Hartle's unexpired term.
Thank you. One other, no.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Who moved that motion, mayor?
Art.
And second?
Mary.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes, with comment, John, I apologize if that's what happened, if we jumped over like that.
Thank you.
All right.
Melendez.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Just before I go, should I, so I'm free to continue on the way I have been then?
Please, please do.
Great, thank you very much.
You have a great commission, it works well, and, and it's never, it was never political. And that's what made it special, and that's what made it work. If you would let Krishna know of her appointment, and also that she needs to-
My office will, mayor.
Come see Terry to fill out the proper forms.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anything else, Councilwoman Novak?
Just that the next regular council meeting will also be the public meeting on the budget. Other than that progress, mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Buchanan, planning and zoning.
Thank you, mayor. Move the following minutes be received and filed, the Board of Adjustment minutes of February 25, 2015.
Is there a second? Next item.
Letter B, receive and file from Borough South River for zoning ordinance amendment, and letter C, also receive and file.
Anything else?
Yes, a couple of quick things. I just want to congratulate the Cervi soccer and Cervi Little League on their opening days, and wish them luck. I know the Cervi Athletic Association is going to be having theirs in a few weeks. It's great to see kids out and about and playing, and that's what it's all about. A few weeks ago, I went to the Cervi High School Theater production, and saw the high schoolers put on a great show, my favorite year, and I want to commend everyone that was involved with that. I know it's a lot of hard work and dedication for everyone who's involved, and I'd like to see more residents go to that each year. Those kids put their full-time effort and heart into that show. Lastly, as many of you know right now, there's a fire going on at the old Foo Town. Our fire contingent is not here tonight, and hopefully, we keep them in our prayers and everyone who's fighting that fire, and hope that it gets put out as quick as possible. And then that progress.
Thank you. Public Works Councilwoman Kilpatrick.
With no committee reports to, to move or file, I do have three things that I'd like to bring up. First, in regards to the Shade Tree Commission and the greats that the public work have been looking to remove and then put material around over on Main Street, that process continues on as we await to hear from the Shade Tree Commission about what materials they want to put down. So there is a little bit of a delay. They do have a meeting on Thursday, which I will be attending, to see if we can get them to agree on material, so we can get that taken care of for the spring. Secondly, congratulations to the Cervi Athletic Association Stars Cheerleaders. These young girls in varying age groups were able to compete in Wildwood over the weekend, and all three groups actually medaled to some degree. The youngest group, with kids ranging in age from eight down to five years old, took first place. And the remaining groups either placed with second, third, or fourth place, and it's just a lovely, lovely young group of girls, and again, an organization that's thriving and giving more opportunity to kids every day. So congratulations to them. And lastly, in reference to the Public Works facility that we've talked a lot about here, we're at a point now where we can move forward when it comes to discussion, and trying to enter into a contract to purchase and allow the council and our business administrator to do their due diligence along with, with Jay, in order to acquire a property. So I would like to move forward, make a motion to allow the BA to enter into a contract to purchase the property located over on Journey Mill Road. I think that's Mario Lucas's property, so that we can continue on to try to get a facility that is much needed in order to take care of maintenance and bring things under one area, one building, so that we can provide more services to the town more effectively. So I need to make a motion in order to do that, you'll have to just-
What is the cost?
It's, I'll let Dan talk a little bit more about that. I believe it's 4.3, which is what we discussed at the budget meeting.
The last cost was 4.3 million dollars that the seller has agreed to sell.
And what's the cost of bringing it to our specifications?
That's why we would, we would work with Jay and his staff from structural and everything to find out how much more it would take. It would just allow us to enter into a contract with due diligence phases of probably 90 days minimum, so we can look at the property and evaluate it, so we can make a decision.
Would there be any cost to the borough as far as, as entering into this phase?
There'd be a cost with, for Jay and Jay's services.
That I understand.
There'd be a cost to our legal to review that, but otherwise-
Any idea what that cost would be?
Here's our professionals right here, mayor, so they could tell you what it would be.
Mayor, I think from our standpoint, we're looking at environmental work, structural work, as well as architectural work, so you're probably looking in the 15,000 to 20,000 dollar range for those services.
Councilman, councilor, round it.
Mayor, I would suspect between 2,500 and 5,000 dollars.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
So, did you make that in the motion?
Well, I believe I did, I'm not sure, Terry, though.
I second that.
Roll call. Questions, comments? Roll call.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes, with comment that just that when we look at these reports and review these reports, that it's not an exorbitant amount of money to structurally get that building back in shape. I did look at it last year with Bernie Bailey, and I had some concerns on it, which I'll relay to Jay on that. Yes.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
No, that's all, thank you.
Okay. Recreation, Councilman Melendez.
Thank you, mayor. Under recreation, item A, we are asking for authorization to establish a new program entitled Be Active, Get Healthy. It's a four-week program, eight or 16 session. The cost is $80 per resident, or $105 for non-residents for eight sessions. 16 sessions will be $135, and non-residents $160. This is an exercise program that Jerry has engaged a team of people to produce, and it will be done at the recreation center. So you can go to cervirec.com to sign up. Admit.
Approval, mayor?
Yes.
Is there any objection? Put it on for the next item. Anything else, Councilman?
Yeah, I got a few things. I want to thank the police for the successful lead carnival. I don't know if everyone got to go, but the kids loved it. I know my kids did, and all my friends' kids. They did a really good job. I don't know how they did the weather, but they figured that out too, because it turned out to be a summer weekend. So I thank the police and Jerry us for setting that up. I also want to thank the recreation department for their help in this year's Easter egg hunt. It was a great day as well with the weather, it was a beautiful success, and we had a large amount of children attended that. Couple other announcements, the fishing derby will be in Kennedy Park on Saturday, May 16, 8:30 to 9:00 is registration, from 9:00 to 10:30 is the event. It's free to Cervi residents up to 15 years old, and you, participants must bring their own fishing poles. The community flea market is on Saturday, June 6, from 8:00 to 1:00. It will be held at Borough Hall Football Field. It's $15 for residents to register, $25 for non-residents. This time last year, we had over 80 vendors registered. Again, you can go to cervirec.com to register for that event. The Yankee bus trips, 619, 717, 821 are still available. All seats, $90. Section 130, rows 10 to 12, tickets are going very fast. Again, go to cervirec.com to sign up for that one. And speaking of cervirec.com, it really has been a huge success, and I want to thank Jerry us, the recreation department, and our IT director, Tom Bracken, for putting this all together. It's kind of exciting to me to actually see my two years' worth of work trying to bring in technology into this town, and to actually see something that we can actually talk about. You know, police cameras and things like that are pretty cool, but most people don't get to see it. So we have over 466 families, members have signed up, because you can go to it, put your, get a name and password, and you're registered forever. And then once you're on and you're in, you have an account, you can register for any one of these programs. So it looks like we have 466 members, and we've taken in over $20,000 in fees, in online fees, which is pretty incredible, because the amount of time that it normally took to write a check and drop off a check, and Jerry would have to go to a bank and drive his car, and all the manual processes now done automatically via online, your phone, your computer, over the internet. So that's pretty cool.
Anything else, Councilman?
All right, I'm switching hats. Now I'm going to the IT portion of my job for, to discuss. I just want to add, that was the first time people publicly have met Tom Bracken, and you haven't pretty seen him very much, because he's been in dark rooms and crawling on these floors and looking at computers, and the police have commandeered him, I could say, because they're, they're pretty much the high priority right now in terms of IT. So being that he's only been here a couple months, the first thing I ask him to do is, obviously you're walking into a situation, you need to understand what the environment is like. So for the first few months, he met with all departments, like I've been talking about, and what I want to talk about today is what I'll do going forward is quarterly, I'll introduce what I call an administrative IT report, just to kind of let the residents know what's happening in IT, what's coming down the road, what we're thinking about. Nothing's obviously etched in stone, everything needs to be approved, like for example, what you saw tonight, where they presented the camera solution, which took over two and a half years to get there from my originals, you know, doing it myself and creating an RFP and getting, gathering all that documents, and then finally able to bring in Tom to hand over all that information, which now he's turned into an actual solution, which will happen now, thanks to the council's approval. For example, one of the items that he has put together is, we're going to document incidents. People have asked, you know, well, how many things break, or what is the downtime, or how many outages have we had? None of that history exists, and for me, as an IT technologist, it's incredible, because that type of information is available, because things break every day, and you would think And you would think there'd be some mechanism to track that or document it. And in this town, it's never been done. So as an example, I could tell you, in January, there was 33 reported issues as a problem. These are things that break. And then there's 17 requests where people ask for, you know, how do I do this, or what can I do to make this work? So things like that, he's documented. In February, there's 38, total of 62. March is 48. So that type of stuff, we'll be graphing in a graph information so we can actually track. So when the same thing breaks twice, we can go back and say, wait, that thing already broke. We don't have to figure out how to fix it or pay someone again to fix it because this is the solution and we have it, and it's documented. And that's how you save money because you go back and fix the same thing over and over again without understanding or remembering what happened. That's history. So that's a simple thing to do in the IT world nowadays. It's not rocket science. It's just work. But with that, there'll be significant cost savings over time because we won't have to redo things one, two, 10 times. The next thing I just want to talk about, and I'll just go through this quickly because I know this is not the most exciting thing, but it is for me. What he did was, we actually looked at the entire borough, right, met with all departments and tried to understand what's top need. Because everyone you meet with, code enforcement, police, fire, Terry is my number one customer. She gets everything she wants, but she will be. That type of information, we have to gather, we have to quantify, and we have to put into perspective what it's going to cost and what the cost savings will be and what the benefit is. And that's basically what technology is. I mean, everyone wants to do cool, great things on websites and click on things, and it's fun, but, you know, this is a business, you know, I'm running this IT department and this borough's a business, and it needs to prove dividends. And being dividends is efficiencies and cost savings and better services in the end for our residents. So as an example, what I did was, I asked them to list, and we're talking about that today, are the top 10 IT projects for 2015 and 16. And for example, apparently, thanks to Mr. McGill being something about cops, I don't know, but the replacing the town radio system is number one on the priority list for IT. You mentioned dead zones, dead, yeah, something, right. So that's very important. Tom's been, you know, spends a lot of his time at the police headquarters, and I know Dan, you know, he gets a lot of calls from other departments, why do we need, but, you know, we did have to prioritize in public safety. To me, it makes sense as number one. So we have that. Number two would be the video camera system upgrade that we talked about. Number three is, we have to migrate the servers at Borough Hall and the Police Department to Windows 2003. We have to do some security architecture upgrades. It's number four. We have end-of-life PCs that are older than five years old. They need to be upgraded. We have no network management system whatsoever. They're all obsolete. There's no centralized system. That's number six. And Terry, I was wrong. I have number seven, council chambers audiovisual upgrade.
Wait, I moved up quick.
You did. Oh, look at that in 10 minutes. IT is amazing.
That's something that I'm going to, you know, all these other projects are happening, and some of them are in phases. They may take quarters or even years to complete. But the council chamber audiovisual upgrade is something that we're going to look at, and that's going to actually add a camera so you can actually see the people talking because, believe it or not, most people don't even watch us on TV, but the people that do, one of the biggest complaints is they don't know who the mayor is having a conversation with or yelling at, and they don't understand what's going on. So we're going to have a front and rear view camera that we can see. And obviously, the better, we're going to upgrade the video system so you can actually see the people on TV because right now the video quality is bad. And once that type of information is available, we'll be talking about upgrading, which is, oh, it's a little bit down the list, but is the serval.com website.
So what we did with serval rec, there will be a new serval.com that's going to bring all of this into, into view for everyone to see. So like I said, I have about 15 different projects on here that I won't continue to talk about, but website design is on here. That's number 11. So again, these projects will take what we've asked for 2015, 2016. What we're going to do going forward is, as these budget workshops happen every year, you know, each department's going to have to present their case on why they, you know, what their problem is, and then the IT department will figure out what the solution will cost to fix it, why we're going to do it, and what the cost savings will be, and what's it going to include for part of the budget. So again, it's a slow process. It took two years to actually get the gentleman to hire someone to bring someone in, to convince everyone that it was not a waste of money. And over time, long before I'm gone, you will see a lot of cost savings and a lot of benefits for the borough.
Your pleasure.
Thank you.
Last year.
So if anyone has any questions, I could share, what I'll do is, the report is kind of rough right now, but I will put it together so it's legible, and I could share it with Council and Mayor. So you guys have it, and, you know, as we go forward, you know, comments will be appreciated, especially as you guys meet with your departments. You know, since I can, I mean, Tom meets with all of them, but I personally can't. So, you know, that's the type of information, as you meet with them, you know, you find, you know, there's a problem, maybe there's a technology, maybe there isn't. You know, some things are manpower and money, but believe it or not, there's a lot of solutions out there that technology could solve. So that's something I want you, in the future, council people, to start, you know, making that part of their role because, you know, technology is not just for Facebook and cool things. It's to efficiently run a business. And, you know, us as council people, we're actually board of directors, and we should be considering this a business.
I really think that the town is extremely lucky to have Ricky up here, all his expertise, and I want to thank him for taking on all this extra work because it's really not part of Water and Sewer, and I really want to commend you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilman?
No, I think that's progress. Thank you.
Okay. Public Safety, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Minutes and Department reports, move the following minutes reports be received and filed. Number one, the Board of Health minutes of February 5, 2015, to receive and file.
Second.
Next item.
Request for recording tours at the intersection of Washington and Ernston Roads from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM received from the Marlin, Paul and Panthers on September 26, 2015.
Is there a second? Next item.
Request received from Saville Memorial Post, number 4699 VFW, for permission to attend the April 27, 2015 council meeting to help kick off there, and we always look forward to this, the Buddy Poppy Drive throughout Saville.
Any objection? Next item.
Mayor, I'll also prepare a proclamation for that date.
Request received from Saville Emergency Squad for permission to conduct their annual door-to-door fund drive throughout Saville during the month of May, 2015. I just want to comment that this is something that they do need.
Any objection?
Mayor, if I could just add to that, I received an email from the Saville Emergency Squad also requesting weekends in June if needed. Thank you.
Come book it.
I'm sorry?
Weekend to do the-
The fund drive.
Okay, okay.
If it's not completed in May, that allows us to go into June.
Just included in the resume.
Sure.
Anything else, Council President?
Just a couple of comments, Mayor. Again, we mentioned the opening of Saville Little League the other day. It was great. All the public officials were there. More importantly, all the Little Leaguers were there, boys and girls. If you notice, they all get along very well when we let them do what they want to do. But there is always that snapshot that really caught my eye, the young lady who was singing the Star Spangled Banner. A great job, and to show how nonpartisan I can be at times, it was really, it was very nice when the mayor came over and gave her that big hug. She had a smile you wouldn't believe. So very proud of all of you. And we have AA opening up in a couple of weeks. The other item is that we will be getting a grant for $400,000 for upgrades on Poleski Street, thanks to Assemblyman Wisneski and Coughlin, something that we need very badly. Other than that, may I have progress?
Thank you. Arthur, I apologize.
Not a problem, Mayor. Water and Sewer, there are no reports, just two, two items at the request of the mayor at the last council meeting with what's been going on in the Water and Sewer Department on April 1st. Councilman Buchanan, myself, our labor attorney, Bob Clark, Bob Smith, the head of Water and Sewer, and Dan Frankel, we met, and we've outlined a plan of action to start, to work with the employees, to work with Bob Smith. And I think it'll be something that, as it works its way through, might be beneficial for other departments also. And we'll get everything back on track and everything because the workers and the employees we have in the borough are good. And I think it's just a matter of, we need to do a little refreshment and review of things that have been going on. So I think it'll go in a positive manner. One other item I'd like to bring up, I had a firm contact me, Cable Associates of Highland Park. They do energy aggregation. And last year, we did the energy aggregation. If we're going to do it again, it's coming up again. They're willing to come in just to give a overview of how they handle it, which is a little bit different than what, when we went through it. And then they recommend going out for RFPs and everything. And just to give you an example, during the same time period, they had another local community in Middlesex County that when they got the rates the first time, which was a 5% savings, which is basically what we got, that community wasn't happy and said, can we go out and do it again? We were told, no, you can't do it. You're going to lose it. They went out, did it again, held off for a month, and had 9.5% savings to their residents. So I think just to hear them, not a commitment, it's just going to be, you know, so I'd like the council, they would be willing to come to our next council meeting or the one after that. I think it's just to hear another side because we're still going to have to decide whether we want to continue down that road or not.
So they like a consultant that represents multiple-
Yeah.
Multiple-
Similar to the consultants we had in.
Right, right.
They do the same thing.
Right, right. Okay.
It's just another view.
Any cost?
And then we'd go out for an RFP and go with whoever's best. And their attitude is, if it's them, fine. If it's not, at least they gave a presentation on how it should be done.
You just want to check if they charge for the RFP?
No. No. Everything would be up to us to do. All they're going to do is just tell you what they, the process.
Okay, so we would do the RFP.
We would do everything.
And they would tell us what companies-
Right. They just tell you a process that they've been successful at doing.
Sure.
Anything else?
Would you like me to invite them to the next meeting?
Invite them.
How about the meeting after that, Alden? Because we have the budget-
What is that, the May?
First meeting in May.
Well, check, check when this current contract expires and make sure we have enough time.
I think it's July. I believe it's July.
I'd like to see them here.
If they have a short presentation, five, eight-minute presentation, they can come next meeting. Otherwise, if it's a long presentation-
It's more like September.
Just ask them, ask them to condense it.
That's when it went into effect, but it takes two months before, three months before.
All right.
All right, if it's a short one, then is that agreeable? If it's a short one, next meeting?
That's fine.
That's fine.
If it's a longer one, we'll do it the following.
Right.
I'll let you know tomorrow, Terry.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you. That's it. Progress. Thank you.
Okay, for me, I've been contacted by the Head Trustee of the Duarkadish Temple, who wanted to meet with me as the mayor. I've known him for 16 years, maybe more. I also was contacted by the attorney, Larry Sacks, for the planning board and the zoning board. He actually set it up, and we're going to meet Wednesday night, here in Borough Hall, actually. So I wanted everybody to know that. I particularly am interested in this because on February 28th, an invoice was submitted to the borough for the first month of the law firm Weiner Lesniak for $36,905 for their first month's work representing the borough on the temple project. Why it wasn't on the bill list, I don't know. But I think, I think it behooves the borough that I meet with them. Now, I did make it very clear, extraordinary clear, that whatever the outcome of the meeting is between myself and the Head Trustee and the attorney, that compliance with whichever land use board they're going to go in front of, whether it's the zoning board of, or the planning board, is the board that they have to comply with. Whatever, whatever the requirements are, they must be complied with. I couldn't waive them if I wanted to waive them. What I always ask everybody who comes to the borough and wants to meet with me and they have a project is, I always ask for compliance. That has been my position. I have a good many friends who are residents of the borough who attend the Duarkadish One of my doctors is a member of the temple. So anyway, I think financially, after this whopper of a first bill, I think, I think it's in the best interest of the borough that I do meet and see if I can mitigate some kind of conclusion to this because the cost could be ruinous to us as the borough, as this is federal court, and if the first month's bill is $36,000, it could be extraordinarily expensive. So I'm letting the council know and the public know what I'm doing and why I'm doing that. With that, Business Administrator-
Well, wait a minute. I think this is something that we should be discussing in closed session because we're involved in the middle of litigation.
I understand that.
The time to have met with them, Kennedy, would have been before they filed the lawsuit.
Mayor, I'm at $36,000 for the first month. I'm going to make an executive-
It's actually about 72 because we paid Dakota another 36 for Fender.
I'm going to, I'm going to meet with them at their request and at the recommendation of the planning board and the zoning board attorney. There's no promise that I can make that anything can happen or anything can't happen, but in good faith, to see if we can draw this to a conclusion, I am going to meet with them because, quite frankly, the borough cannot afford this.
I agree with you, Mayor, but I mean, this is really setting precedent that we've, you were the one who insisted on this, an additional attorney to represent the town, and now you're just going to, we have active lawsuit here, and you're just going to meet with these people? The time to meet with the mayor was before the lawsuit was filed, not now. This is unprecedented with the mayor.
It may be, but it's part of the job of being mayor when you're the chief executive. You're doing the business of the borough. If I can, if I can mitigate it out, I'll mitigate it out. I didn't want to do it until you after the fact. I wanted to tell you before I did it.
I, I'm against this. I'd like to note on this, not to do it without-
Mike, a question for attorney. How does this affect the case? I know-
I know, I know that there has been meetings and discussion amongst council with Weiner Lesniak, Larry Sacks. I know that the judge has promoted discussions from plaintiff's perspective. The judge did suggest strongly to plaintiff's counsel that they sit down with officials and talk about their, their land use case. I am, under the, understand, I didn't realize Larry asked the mayor to do this, but Larry Sacks, who's the planning board attorney, did participate at the hearing before the federal court judge. The judge did emphasize strongly to plaintiffs that they need to sit down, that their case may have some weaknesses in it. And, you know, the mayor is not going to be able to promise anything without running it through Larry Sacks and also Weiner Lesniak. And plus, any type of resolution will be, will have to come to the mayor and council anyways for discussion.
So can I just, just to throw this in there, $36,950 to Weiner Lesniak. We ended up where we are. We paid Dakota's 40 grand. So I think we're in a black for about $26, $2700 here. And if you work your magic, maybe this all goes away when you meet them.
I don't know if there's any magic. I just don't see any harm since it was requested by both the temple and the, and the land use attorney that I, that I attend this meeting.
No, not at all. I don't, I'm not for it. Actually, I'd like to attend it.
I think there's more harm if I don't.
What I'm saying is that we've got X amount of dollars to Dakota's, X amount of dollars to Weiner Lesniak. We've done pretty good. We've saved a couple of bucks.
It's one way to look at it.
Shocking, huh?
When is this, when is this meeting, Mayor?
Wednesday.
What time, Mayor?
Is there a time?
You know, I don't know. It's in the evening, you have to work.
Is there any way as liaison to planning and zoning?
Will I be allowed to go to this meeting?
I assume, I assume, I assume that they requested that, that it be with the, I don't really care, but it depends, you know, if you guys want to all pile in, all pile in.
Thank you.
There's not a form, Mayor?
You know, but I think, I think, I don't think that's what they had in mind, but you guys will do what you're going to do, and that's that.
As you say
We're going to meet in three-ten or three-oh-eight, and, and that's, and that's what we're doing. So.
I'll be there.
You guys do what you want to do, and we'll move forward.
Thank you.
With that, the Business Administrators' report.
We didn't have a time on that, though, Mayor. You said you weren't sure.
I'll get it to Terry. Or call Larry Sachs, you know.
Or Terry, can you just
We'd rather call Terry.
Yeah, I'd rather call Terry, too. Terry, can you just
Call Larry. I know he sent it to me, but I'm not going to scroll through my emails right now. All right, Dan, go ahead.
Under planning and zoning, Mayor, authorization to refer to Town Lake West traffic signal approval matter to the borough attorney to prepare the required ordinance. Okay?
Next item.
Authorization to appoint a full-time public safety telecommunicator. It's a replacement, no extra costs on a per diem pool.
Next item.
Authorization to purchase through and participate in the WISCA-NASPA Cooperative Purchasing Organization for the purchase, installation, and maintenance of the security cameras, as was done in the presentation earlier this evening.
Next item.
Authorization for the borough attorney to review, and upon approval, authorization to execute a site access agreement granting the EPA and its contractors access to conduct site cleanup work at the Horseshoe Road Superfront Site.
Next item.
Authorization to contract with Spring Irrigation Company for the maintenance and repair of the borough's irrigation system at various locations at an amount not to exceed two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, plus the hourly rate for parts and labor, for all parts and labor, for all repairs as needed.
Next item.
Authorization for the clerk to advertise for the receipt of bids for gasoline and diesel fuel.
Next item.
Authorization to contract with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority for the borough's curbside single-stream recycling, as recommended by a recycling coordinator.
Next item.
Special event permit application received from First Presbyterian Church of Saville to hold a flea market in the church parking lot on June sixth, two thousand and fifteen, from eight AM to two PM, with a rain date of June thirteenth.
Next item.
Authorization to extend the contract of pump maintenance service with AC Schultz for an additional two-year period at the current rates.
Anything for closed?
Uh, no, but I want to go one more thing, Mayor, if I may. I was attending a meeting, so everyone knows with, at the, at the request of Chief Zabrowski and Captain Fitzsimmons. Present at that meeting was Dr. Labby and Amidio DeAndrea. One of the things they were asking me to come back to council about is that they are very, very tight on their budget this year. We have two police officers as SRO officers in the school system. One is paid by, excuse me, both are paid by, by the Board of Education, partially paid by the Board of Education. Because of their tight budget constraint, they are asking us if we would help them out in our budget, which I've talked to Wayne, and Wayne says we can do it, to see if we could defer, if they could defer their payment by one year for this year's budget coming up. It'd be fifty thousand dollars. They will pay us the money back in, in their next year's budget, which will end up being
Any objection? Next item.
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
You want to do the CFO's report?
Okay, and then I just
For those
I, I already covered it, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, Jay's, Borough Engineers' report, Jay Cornell.
Thank you, Mayor. First item, check of quarter range. You've already taken action under your public portion, so nothing further's needed. Second item, the Borden Town Avenue water plant modifications. At the last meeting, we provided you with the bid results. It came in over budget. After further discussion, it was decided we want to go through and try to reduce the scope of work, so we're going to re-bid that. We'd ask a resolution be on your next agenda, authorizing rejection of the bids, and having a clerk re-advertise. That's in there. Thank you.
Uh, is there anything for executive? Okay, on the public portion, Terry, just advise Larry Sachs, the council, who from the council will attend, or who wants to attend this meeting with the temple, so that he knows. At this time, we're going to open the public portion for questions or comments on any and all issues. Are there any questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll take the motion to close the public portion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Take a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.